Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, October 4th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop. Mr. Witherspoon is absent.
Stand for silent meditation.
Today, we wish to honor the family of retired firefighter Dave Hershey, who recently passed away. Thank you for your service and blessings to the family.
Let's take a moment to silence.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all thankful and grateful that you allowed us to assemble in these chambers today. We ask by the power of your Spirit and your grace that you and heaven was to make good decisions on the behalf of the residents of Erie, Pennsylvania. We ask that you comfort those who are in mourning and that you give special grace to those who are in need. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 20th City Council meeting and bills for payment on October 6th and 13th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson.
We've got a couple presentations today. A little bit, a little bit of a change in the order of them. If we can have Eunice Moore from the Human Resources Office come up. You've got some people to introduce to us.
I've been introduced, so.
Okay. Yeah, it's fine.
Should we go there?
Sure. And this was Councilman Brzezinski's suggestion last time, so I really appreciate you putting this together so quickly for us. Hey, it's our first time figuring this out, so.
That they come down, I'm gonna have them introduce themselves and tell what position they're in.
Okay, thank you.
We'll start with Pam.
Good morning, I'm Pam Wade, I'm the new executive legal assistant for the solicitor's office.
Welcome.
I'm Karen Burton, I'm the new county technician in your department.
Welcome.
Good morning, my name is Tom Spence, I'm staff accountant of the financial department.
Welcome.
Good morning, my name is Mark Matlock, I am the grant accountant, and I began on July 31st.
Welcome.
Good morning, I'm Karen McKenna, I'm the grant writer.
Good morning, I'm Victoria Lewis, I am the grant administrator.
Good morning, I'm Sushil Kamjos, I'm the data analyst.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Those are a lot of the new positions from the last budget, like four of them were the new ones that have shuffled around. Not yet. Okay, okay, never mind, sorry. All right, well, thank you all for coming in and introducing yourselves, looking forward to working with you.
Mr. President, I gotta say hello to Jamie, we went to K-5 at Burton School together, so.
All right, continue on with our presentations. The next one is for our champs. We have the Erie Seawolves winning their championship, and we have a resolution to present them. So let me read on behalf of council, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that whereas the city council of the city of Erie wishes to pay tribute to the 2023 Erie Seawolves as they claimed the Eastern League championship for the first time in franchise history, the Erie Seawolves, a double-A affiliate of the Detroit Tigers, since 2001, earned their championship title with a 10-0 shutout win over the Bingham Rumble Ponies to sweep the game, sweep the series in game two in front of a record-breaking playoff crowd of 6,113 fans. And whereas, under the leadership of Mr. Greg Coleman, president of the Erie Seawolves, and coach Gabe Alvarez, who was named Eastern League Manager of the Year, and a talented Seawolves team and staff made significant strides this year and brought pride and gratification to themselves and the Erie community fans who have supported them. So, therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Erie that this commendation be placed into the official records of the city of Erie to document the love and support Erie fans have for baseball in the city of Erie. Thank you. Can we trade? Yeah, we can. All right. There we go, guys. There it is. Thank you all, I appreciate it. Thank you all, I appreciate it. You know, I was, just on that note, I was talking to my kid, because she's in high school now, and we were talking about going to like high school football games and the community pride that, you know, I grew up with in my community with like different high schools. But when you get to a city the size of Erie, it goes a little bit beyond, and now we start getting these professional leagues. So I mean, it's such a huge element of community pride, and I'm really excited about the continued success of that team. And with that, we're moving on to the Jason Belton awards. Mel had, Councilman Witherspoon had surgery this week, just rotator cuff, he's in recovery. So with that, Councilman Brzezinski and Chief Spizarni will be presenting these awards.
Thanks for Mel for being sick today. The Mel Witherspoon Summer League, known as Spoons League, has an appreciation award for several officers for their outstanding contribution to the inner-city youth through the Spoons Summer Basketball League. These officers worked with the league at nights, attending the games, and interacting with the children that were playing, as well as the fans at the games. So I would ask the following officers, please step up here for your award. I'll read them off real quick in no particular order. Patrolman Jim McClellan. Patrolman Kyle Coontz. Patrolman Maxwell Brozell. Patrolman Mike Catala. Patrolman Dave Smith. Now promoted Corporal Smith, thank you. And Corporal Sean McGill, who could not be here today. We'll capture them after, look at picture. All right, thank you, guys. Two years ago, Mel Witherspoon asked to create a distinguished service in community policing award after the death of Patrolman Jason Belton. Jason was a well-known bicycle officer, served in the downtown area, known to many for his outstanding community police work. The award was created after Jason died in 2021 of COVID-19. This year, the command staff made the choice that Sergeant Melanie Cesoric. Come on up, Mel. Mel's a 19-year veteran with the department, works diligently with both the PAL and COPS program, a terrific role model for the kids. She enjoys spending time working with the youth of the community. She started as a patrol officer, was promoted to corporal in the field training unit, where she taught new police officers how to do the job. Mel was then promoted to sergeant in patrol and supervisor of the patrol group. Thank you very much, she was an easy choice for this award.
One final thing I do have to share, and it's a tribute to Officer Lennox and all the guys that are working community-wide. I got a call from a lady who was walking by Perry School as the kids were getting out of school, and she was so impressed because the kids ran up to the police car and talked to the policeman. That's what it's all about, community. And every kid, every person should feel that they can say hi to every one of these guys in uniform. They don't want to be, they don't want to meet them the first time when they're getting a ticket, or they don't want to meet them the first time their house is being burglarized or whatever. We want everybody to know that these guys, first and foremost, put their life on the line every day, but they're the first people we call when we're in need too, and I thank all of you. I'm done.
Our next on the agenda is a presentation from the chamber. That's been postponed, and we're gonna be looking at that as a study session so that the community can get greater detail, which moves us on to repository sales. Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Thank you.
Do we have anyone here for anything?
They're here for the presentations.
They're working.
Sorry, for those of you that are streaming, there's a lot of people that are now exiting after the presentations. And I see who's left, and hey, guys, I know a bunch of you.
You all look very familiar. Excited to see us and celebrate the Seawolves.
Okay, do we have anyone here for public comments? If you would, today we have something on the agenda to update the rules of council, but I will let you know that in the meantime, I do not intend to enforce the requirement of you putting your address available publicly. So if you would present your name and your municipality, yeah, I know, and if someone in the back can just shut the door over there to my left, that would help it be a little quieter.
Thank you, Kathy.
So if you would state your name and municipality, you have five minutes to offer public comments. Thank you.
This is Fredda Tepfrah, I live in the city of Erie. October 23rd is the last day to register to vote, people should do that. It's, I think you can request a mail-in ballot until October 31st, but I don't suggest you wait that long. So it's the 50th anniversary of the signage of the Rehabilitation Act, and 33 years since the ADA was signed, and Pope Paul, whatever, Francis, whoever our pope is right now, or your pope, said the inclusion of people with disabilities cannot be just a slogan, and that was in 2022. It's interesting, because the Catholic Cathedral, for about three years, has tied up the sidewalks on Sarsapras and 10th Street, often with no signage at all, or inadequate signage, inappropriate signage. And the Erie Downtown Development Corporation, whom I don't agree with on a lot of things, provides sidewalk bypass voluntarily. The Catholic Church could avoid the issues that they have created for pedestrians by doing the same. Hopefully, the city will be enacting an ordinance about this to require permits, to require justification for sidewalk closures, and to require sidewalk bypass whenever possible. I would say that right now, the city's own project going on on State Street, there is inadequate signage for people who are crossing State Street and are gonna encounter a closure, I think it's at 7th, it might be at 8th, and also for people coming from the north approaching the closure. I saw a boom truck on 8th Street with Gannon students walking around it, there was a person up on it, there was no signage, no nothing. City needs to have a more firm presence in this arena. I want to congratulate the city on promoting an ordinance related to landlords and tenants. Tenants should have the right to renew, they should be able to lodge a complaint about inadequate conditions or unhealthy conditions without fear of retribution. Is that five minutes? That was something, no? Okay. Also, I'm a little confused about some of the things I read, so are you gonna be starting your Wednesday meetings at 7:00 instead of 7:30? Does that mean you'll be starting the caucus at 6:30? It's different. A lot of people have 6 o'clock meetings, and when you start at 7:30, they can do both. Then there's something that says no person other than a member of the council shall be permitted into, anyway, this is about questioning, no question shall be asked to councilperson except through the presiding officer. I hope to be able to ask rhetorical questions, and does that mean that you will then enter into discussions? I think revising the regulations is a good thing, just to be careful. How much time do I have left? A minute and 20 seconds. So once again, I will remind people, if you are on Medicaid, you will not be automatically re-enrolled, that you have to make sure, go to the state's Compass website and make sure that your contact information is up to date so that you can be notified of the rolling disenrollment of people who were on Medicaid. If you have not renewed your enrollment, and if you don't have your contact information, you won't get that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Fredda.
Thank you, Fredda. The update on the presiding officer and the allowance for discussion is actually not an update, that's how it's stated in there now.
Good morning, I'm Karen Adams from the 3300 block of Green Garden Boulevard. Been here before, we've had this discussion before. My frustration and my concern is that with the article that was in the paper last week, that this is going forward next year, we have been told, every time we speak to someone in the city, we're told a different story. So that to me is a lack of transparency. I know that I've been told by you, Mr. Brzezinski, and you, Mr. Nelson, that we are working on ordinances to provide for continued parking, which is frankly not the major issue anymore. The major issue always has been the safety concerns, and also the fact that there's a total lack of transparency is the way we see it, and that's very frustrating. So I would appreciate any further comments that we could have, whether it's in private or whether you want to speak to this now, that's up to you. But again, the greater concern for me personally is this lack of transparency, and this, it appears that City Council and City Hall are not in sync with what's going on, and that is a major concern. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may for one second, I know we normally don't banter, but for the record, I sent an email to Ms. Myers, I've known her for a long time when I was on the school board, and I asked her if she'd be interested in knowing the rest of the story. Surprisingly, I didn't get a call back, I don't know why, but the lack of transparency is very evident. You know, we're talking about a strip from 38th to 26th Street, you can't get there from 38th because there is no bike lane on West 38th Street. And once they go down to 26th Street, there's no bike lane below 26th Street. I've asked time and time again that the administration cease and desist until a real program is put together and the folks have the right, I'm sorry, and the folks have the right to know what is going on. It's been very unfair the way that people have been poked and prodded, you know, same thing happened on the east side, that there weren't that many people on Parade Street that evidently knew how to voice their opinions. They were not happy with what they have there, that's for sure. And I just want to make sure that whatever is done is done with the full information for everybody. I contacted PennDOT, they told me that the whole thing is in design, nothing's firm, and yet our administration is putting out bids for the work. There's definitely a lack of communication, and I don't blame the folks on Green Garden for being upset, not because it's Green Garden and they have driveways and all the other crazy-ass reasons that people think it's not important. It's important that we work for all those folks out there, all of you sitting in here. That's, you pay us, that's what it's all about, and you deserve the transparency, you deserve to have a voice in what's going on. That's, I'm getting fired up, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brzezinski. Still looking for public comments.
My name is Sonny, and you could call me Roger Spearman, I guess, but I'm here for the Upper Room, the homeless people, and it's like too much drug activity there and too many like hustlers there. And it's like too much drug activity there and too many, like, hustlers there. And it's like people that's there that ain't got nothing to do with homeless. And the donations, there is no donations. There is no clothes. There is no progress. There is nothing there. So I'm just trying to, like, make it a better community for homeless people. Like, we need help down there, and there's no help down there. I've been up for three days straight. Just like, can't go to sleep because there's too many hustlers out there. They don't like me out there. They told me to go to a shelter, but when I go to a shelter, there's no beds open. So I have to wait. But in the meantime, by waiting, it's already like too much damage's already been done out there. They need new staffs, new everything there. The staffs don't care. Nobody care up there. I've been there for 13 years. No progress. ECCM, overflow shelters, they all need to get better. But I'm here to fight on behalf of the positive community of Catholics. So I represent the positive community of Catholics. I don't know what is going on in between the community of Catholics, but we need to get it together out there. We need to tighten up out there. They're using the parks and they're using the shelters to get income for themselves and taking it. People that, like, the donations, regular people taking the food off the table away from the poor, clothing, socks, it's not for those who already have so. It's for those who don't have nothing. So we need to, like, try to, like, get something together and, like, get rid of these old staff and hire new ones and new directors or something. Something. It's bad out there. It's very bad out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Rodney.
Good morning. Lovely to see all of you. Beautiful. Autumn is coming. My name is the Very Reverend Melinda Hall. I live in the Erie City Municipality, and I rise to speak on the ordinance regarding Part III, Title III Business Regulations and the addition of Article 354. In a city with so many renters, protections are really warranted. So people actually feel safe. Evictions and little notice of rent raises do not create a positive environment for renters in which the possibility of either hangs over their head and creates anxiety about where they will live, where their kids will live, what will happen if they're evicted. And the process of finding new housing is both expensive and difficult. So I, I really hope that we can, uh, pass this to alleviate some anxiety for our renters. But more than that, our renters have the, what I believe is a right to live in a safe environment. And the city has codes for a reason. And so the idea that a renter would face eviction for calling to have the codes updated in their building, house, apartment, seems a little unconscionable to me and a really unfortunate power dynamic. To want a safe space for you and your kids should not come at the expense of thinking you will be evicted. And while I myself am not a renter, I serve a congregation, the Episcopal Cathedral, not the one affiliated with said, um, lack of sidewalk notices, uh, just while I'm here. Uh, you know, we, we work with USCRI. We work with Catholic charities. We have a food pantry. We see the folks who suffer from this. And it causes real anxiety and real problems. And, and, and living in unsafe conditions does not do anything, particularly for the kids who have to live in those spaces. I would also say as far as the part of the article concerned with domestic violence, I would hope that we could agree that domestic violence, the incident at time that that happens is one of the most dangerous moments in a person's life. And anything that can be done to reduce the risk of that person, primarily women, but not exclusively, ending up on the street or that woman and her child ending up on the street should be done. Locks should be changed. Uh, I lost a parishioner to domestic violence, and I, uh, feel extremely strongly about that and the protections that should be around it. For those who say that this, uh, article does not go far enough, and for those who would say that landlords should maintain power, I would say this is a lovely compromise. The work has been done to get the Landlord Association on board. The power dynamic right now resides entirely with the landlords and not with the renters, and that doesn't seem as, uh, it should be. This is a city of a lot of renters who deserve some form of protection. And for my part, I hope for the well-being of all our residents. So thank you for your consideration and for your thoughtfulness in putting forward this new regulation.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name's Brandon Penn. I'm the current president of the Apartment Association. So I figured after the last speaker, it's probably a good idea for, for me to come up. Um, I do agree with this new rental ordinance that's being placed. I wasn't sure if these comments, uh, were going to be before or after the reading of the ordinance, but, uh, I have talked with Chuck and, um, excuse me, or sorry, Mr. Nelson, Ms. Faulkner, um, about what's in there, and it's all fair. Um, it's, the fact of the matter is it doesn't change a whole lot of what's realistically in the laws. The one part of it I do have a little bit of an issue with is the summary saying that tenants don't have as many rights as the landlord because that's simply not true. The laws of Pennsylvania are there to protect the tenants. Um, there are good tenants, just as there are bad tenants, the same as there are with landlords. There's good landlords and bad landlords. Um, the failure, I think, comes into the education of what the rights actually are of the tenants, which hopefully this ordinance will help clarify. Um, but I was, I was watching videos of previous, um, meetings here and things like landlords putting cameras in kitchens and bat, and, and living rooms and things like that. That's already protected. The tenant has the right to say no, and that's illegal. Okay? So there's, there's already thing protections for tenants when landlords aren't doing what they're supposed to do. Retaliation evictions are already illegal. You, you can't just, if somebody calls code, you can't just evict them. There has to be a lease violation. Now, what this ordinance does do, which I applaud, is, uh, now there is a penalty for a landlord that does, you know, try to evict in regards to retaliation. So there's a little bit more teeth to that. Uh, the abuse ordinance, the, the protection for folks that are, uh, being abused, I think that's a really good idea. I do a lot of Section 8 housing. Uh, we already sign a Violence Against Women's Act, uh, form. Um, so nothing really is changing with that. One concern I do have, as I brought up to, uh, Mr. Nelson and Ms. Faulkner, uh, is what will be in place to help these abused individuals? It's great to say, yes, they're not the ones that will get evicted if they are abused or, you know, are in that situation. But what happens if the breadwinner leaves and now they can no longer pay rent? Okay, so, uh, to my knowledge, and I don't know the ins and outs of SafeNet and some of the different organizations, but I believe they're mainly focused on helping folks find new housing, right? I think there should be implementations to help them, uh, keep the housing, you know, SafeNet to give funding for these folks to stay in place where they're at. Um, the Apartment Association is happy, uh, and, you know, I do speak, I am speaking for everyone at this point. Um, so I'm sure there's some folks that aren't necessarily happy with it. But for the whole, we're happy with what this ordinance does. The one thing I would, um, like to impart is further regulations could be very detrimental, not only for landlords, but also the tenants. So I'll give you an example. Uh, during COVID, the government thought it was a good idea to put an eviction moratorium in place so landlords could not file an eviction. That's great in thought. In practice, it's horrible. What happened was folks that could pay rent and should pay rent did not. You know, I had folks on social security or got government checks or, or they were still working. There was no disruption, disruption to their pay. Yet the government and the news said, "You don't have to pay your landlord." That's a bad model. You know, things will deteriorate horribly. Why that doesn't work for the, uh, the tenant is now I approve a third of the people I used to approve. When looking, so that's a huge issue for homelessness, right? I used to be able to give people chances if they didn't quite meet the income, if they had an eviction, if they had a couple criminal history things or something that wouldn't normally meet our application. I was willing to give them a chance because I said, "Hey, what's the worst that happens? I have to evict them," and that's about a two-month process. Okay? We can do that. But when the government steps in and says, "No, you can't do that," now I can't take the chance, and that hurts people. And that's what I think people don't realize is when the government puts extra regulations in, it makes it harder for everybody. Okay, sorry.
Hey, thank you, Brandon. It's been a pleasure to work with you.
You as well.
So if you've not given comments, could you form a line on either side of the room so that we can cut down on lab time?
Good, sir. Name and municipality.
Hello, my name is Admiral Torres Legario from Erie, PA, 555 West 17th Street in Erie. I wanted to mention to the people in Erie and the citizens that we have sometimes confuse the people in the newspaper and all that because I think it's wrong to have a sanctuary city to call that, announce that on a newspaper when we wanted to have Erie to become a beautiful tourist attracted, attraction, you know what I mean, city? We, we have built Erie pretty good in a few years. But now we have imagined that, for example, the people who wanted to be, to see the beautiful city of Erie become an attractive city as a tourism attraction, they come and come, they're going to come from all over around the city, the towns and cities, and they're going to come to Erie, go to the Perry Square and see the people laid down on the sidewalk and all that with all their junket belongings thrown over there. I think that is wrong to try to announce to the world, to the world, not to the, to the area, that Erie wants to become a sanctuary city. Because then again, when the tourists come to Erie, they have done a beautiful job at the big front, hotels and all that, looks good. But then again, the people going to, tourists going to walk through the Perry Square to the city, and they're going to see these people like that, I think it's, it's wrong to call that sanctuary city. We have to help the people as the people have been helped through the years in Erie. You know what I mean? From all over, the, the different countries, they have been helped. But to announce to the big, in a newspaper and all that, the Erie want, I think it's wrong. It's irresponsible because they have to look in the future of the city of Erie like some people have been done. They building the big front and all that looks beautiful. But then again, to announce that and bring people all over to Erie to sleep on the sidewalks and all that, I think it's wrong. And the thing is that we need to stop that. At the Perry Square, you look around the city, you see the people with their belongings sleeping on the street and all that. So I think it's wrong, and I think that Erie has to think back again for something better to make city beautiful, real beautiful, not to, it's counterproductive to say that tourist attraction and then sanctuary city. I think it's, it's backwards. You know what I mean? You try to make it beautiful, but then again, you bring all these people here, it, it looks good, it looks bad. Then again, in other words, I wanted to say that we have to pay attention to the stop signs in the city of Erie because I think we need a reflective paint on the stop signs. Somebody have been doing a beautiful job to put a plastic reflective, uh, parts on the stop sign that looks really good. I think we need to help the traffic area and the citizens by putting reflective paint on the stop signs that you can see from a distance. And right now, there are some places in here that you, you can hardly see the stop signs because they're covered with trees, branches and all that. I mean, that's what is wrong. Some of the stop signs right on, on a tree, attached to the tree. I think we have to pay attention to that in order to help the city, the traffic, and the people who can see that, who can be able to see that from the distance. You sometimes, you, they're covered with branches of trees, you know what I mean? I think we have to pay attention to that and work for the city of Erie, make it nice. But so far, it hasn't, it hasn't been working. You know what I mean? So I, I'm calling to the people to put attention to those signs, to the traffic, to help the people to have less accidents because you can hardly see them from the distance. So we need to, uh, if you're looking at the 22nd Street, uh, West Side or something like that, you see reflective signs that you can see from the distance. I think we need to paint, to paint with a reflective paint so we can see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Gary Horton in 2046 East 19th Street. First of all, I'd like to give honor to God for the privilege of being here this morning. Over the last 15 days or so, I've lost, I've had surgery and I lost a brother and a cousin to that deadly scourge of cancer. Um, so I thought, uh, enough of you to get up and come down here this morning and thank you for accepting or being willing to accept and support our resolution that's on your agenda today. I owe an immense debt of gratitude to the mayor's office, Renee, and to Erin Carey. Um, I just, she came every time, every program, every meeting that we had. Um, when our neighborhood started meeting, your plan only focused on East and West Bayfront downtown. We were asked to wait. Uh, we couldn't afford to wait. Not in a neighborhood that I have the privilege of serving. Uh, 50% of the residents in my neighborhood are children, 18 years old and under. That's the largest demographic of kids in any neighborhood in Erie. Our neighborhood has been racked with violence and trauma. Three-year-old hit and run, seven-year-old drive-by shooting. Two people decide to meet at the park and shoot it out, and one leaves, uh, they're dead. Just the guy in Buffalo who kills himself in front of Burton School. I mean, the, the, the 13-year-old that the two gangs are fighting around now. The, uh, chil, the, uh, father of one of those kids went into the bar. Our neighborhood has had enough trauma and enough violence that we need a win. And today's resolution, if you, if you adopt it, will provide us the, the hope of that win. Uh, when we look at your contribution and support to our efforts at Joyce Savaccio Park, um, the only, um, entity that has Erie's only woman mayor's name on it, uh, you've made it possible for us to grow food there. And that came out of our planning, out of kids, out of residents in that neighborhood. The, your investment to be at Roger Young Park, uh, is another, uh, opportunity to help us continue a path of hope and opportunity in our neighborhood. And what we're trying to do at Burton Park, hopefully, I mean, at Burton School, hopefully you'll find enough resources to hopefully you'll find enough resources to be able to leverage whatever you're doing at Roger Young Park to help us at Burton School. We have a chance to win. We have a chance to win. And by becoming a part of your overall plan and with infinite Erie's support, we're gonna win. We're gonna win. We're gonna reverse the disinvestment that has taken place in our neighborhood by providing targeted investment through these projects. And again, I just want to thank the city of Erie, both council and the administration for what you've done, where you put your money where your mouth is and that. And I hope you have a little bit of both left, both money and mouth, because there's still a little bit more work to be done. But God bless you and thank you for helping us keep hope alive.
Thank you, Gary.
Council, my name is Donald Crenshaw. I live at 2041 Woodlawn Avenue. The Good Lord just had it that my brother spoke before me, Brother Gary in the area, which you guys just heard about and there's positive things happening, Savacchio Park, Burton School. And it's good to know that council especially have done so much and I hope that you continue to do to help make a difference in this particular area. With those positive things being said, there's also a part of me where there's a little bit of hurt because I started twenty years ago in that same neighborhood, that same census tract, Twenty-Sixth and Downing. We built twenty-five homes and we sold them as home ownership. We were able to assemble enough funding that the project development cost per house was cut in half. It was a hundred and forty thousand. We sold them for seventy. We have a project right now that's in Harrisburg getting finalized to build at Twenty-Sixth and Downing another eleven new units and renovate fifteen units in that area for a total of twenty-six units. But the part of me that hurts is we have the no support, I feel, from some of the powers-to-be to make a difference. But I gotta say, council supported me seven years ago on that same corner because when it was brought up, we're storing equipment, materials there. I said to council, "We're gonna develop this one at some point. We're gonna build new housing." Council passed that we were allowed to make that a yard until we developed it. Well, we've been approved for funding to build the housing there. So council, continue to do what you've done and that is to make a difference in that community and in the area. And I ask that council look at the work that's going on in this area. All of the lights that's being taken down along State Street, I put them up originally, part of a minority requirement program. At that point, we had an officer that made sure all the federal dollars that came through and state gave minorities opportunities to work and grow and build. I'm a byproduct of that opportunity. The city of Erie is the only place I know now where there's no enforcement of minority participation. I'm in Pittsburgh, they're begging me. EMTA did give me a call and say, "We got federal dollars. We have to have minority participation." With the work that's being passed and the dollars right now, if ten percent of that went to a minority, not me, the next generation, and allowed them to grow, CDB dollars, CDB DG dollars paving, five hundred thousand dollars a year, ten percent minority requirement, fifty thousand dollars went to a minority. Well, I was that minority that bought a truck and went out and hauled asphalt. There's no minorities now. There's no requirements. We talk about building up for the future, the next generation. Imagine if ten percent of the dollars that is being spent right now went to somebody that may not have had the opportunity otherwise, that's a minority, what that would do for our community and lifting up the minority? We have the haves and we have the have-nots. We have to do something to help lift up the have-nots. That's why I'm focusing on not just rental, but home ownership. We're taking houses off the blight list, fixing them up with a fight. Some of you know about it, it's arm wrestling. But we're doing it. We're fixing up houses, we're making home ownership. We have to also make with this home ownership the ability to support and afford a home. And that's a workforce. Work with your hands. I have a program right now where we're taking young individuals and teaching them how to fix up blight, get themselves in the position that I hope that they can graduate into an apprenticeship program. The unions right now are looking for people. They're doing all they can do to help. But we have a different mentality today. But I'm continuing to pre-apprenticesize individuals. And when they get to the point, we had an individual that graduated out of my pre-apprentice. He had a choice. He could go into the laborers' union or he could go to work for PennDOT. But he worked with his hands, he chose PennDOT. I would have liked to have seen him work in the workforce, but he bettered himself. That was only one person. But where is the true support to help all of these individuals graduate from the positions they are in so that they can have a better future? I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crenshaw.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jueta Jordan. I'm an eight-year, I've had my daycare for the last eight years. I have a property up on Twenty First and Parade, I'm pretty sure you guys know, the old huts. I've recently filled out an application for the renovation grants that, you know, for the minority grants, I was denied due to my income. One of the ladies that I spoke with, she said it wasn't income based. Filled out the application and got denied. But now redevelopment is saying that the property is blighted. When I got the property in my name from my grandfather back in 2018, I think it was, I spoke with him. He was the director then, I don't know who the guy is, I forgot his name, but I had a call with him, phone call. He said, "Long as they see that the work is being done, that the house, the building would be took off the blight list." Now he's out of the office, someone else is in charge now. They're saying that the building is still on there. Since then, I've had windows put in, Simonian have done electric work, TJ's Plumbing have put new gas lines in. I mean, I'm a single mom, is all I can do so much. I mean, you have the Parade Street development going on. I mean, I think they can come up a little further and help some of us out. But they're trying to take the property. But if they take the property, they're not gonna tear it down. They're gonna fix it up and, you know? So I'm pretty sure that there's, you know, some funding out here that I can get some help with. So, you know, that's all I have to say.
Could you leave your card with our solicitor, please?
I don't have one, I left my purse and a card. But I can leave my name, number, you know, email.
Could you write that down and leave it for us?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
My name is Dennis Metzler. I've been working as an advocate for the homeless, finding a housing. And I've been going through all the blue tape and everything, everything's good. But there's just not enough for me. I have people come up near the streets, say, "I got an apartment at a high-rise." And they're actually coming into the high-rise with backpacks, homeless people, to get the applications from me when they have all these places that are supposed to be helping them. Right here, there's a seventy-eight-year-old woman living on the streets right now. She's arraigned twice in two months and robbed, continued to sleep. She can't even sleep. I can't watch her every night. There's gotta be somebody that's gonna help. I went to every kind of agency you can imagine and everybody's too full. Too much work, too much work. I was working twelve hours a day the last two years for nothing, for free. I do it on my own. And I can't do it no more, man. I need help. These people need help. Seventy-eight years old, she's sitting right there. She's got two carts out there, shopping carts. That's where she lives. She lives on the streets. It's not safe, man. There's gotta be some places, I mean, if a cop sees that going... I would, they're serving protect. Well, they're not serving to protect her, to ride her and buy her. I mean, I'm not blaming them, but they should be able to contact somebody that can help her when they see her out on the street. If this goes... Two weeks ago now, where is she going? She's seventy-eight years old, she has poor health. They're not gonna make it, man. She went last night to see the fountain because she thinks that's the last time she's gonna see it. She slept by that last night. And we had two guys guarding her, nothing happened to her. But I don't own a military group, all right? I don't own a protection group. There's gotta be somebody that could help. And I'm just putting that up to you and I'll tell you what, other cities have people that go around and help people like that. But a lot of people don't because inner cities are congested. But and as you get closer out there, they take care of things like that. And with the right things, she could go and apply for all this stuff. But she, it's hard for me to apply for her, for all these things. I mean, they make it very difficult. So that's all I gotta say, man. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Veronica Rexford. I live at 4124 West Ridge Road and I work at the Eastside Grassroots Coalition and the Urban Erie Community Development Corporation. I just want to briefly highlight some of the high points of what's happened with the Eastside Grassroots Coalition since it came together in 2016. We've enjoyed support from the city when the Boogie Plan originally came out, the Comprehensive Plan. There was a lot of focus on downtown and the bayfront, which is understandable for a planning document of that magnitude. But leaving the neighborhoods out was an issue. Sister Michelle and Gary Horton came together to form this organization to advocate for residents in that area in very end of 2016. And meetings have been taking place continually since the beginning of 2017. More than forty homes have been rehabbed with different facade grants. Three new bus shelters have gone in in places where EMTA and probably the neighborhood was concerned about where they would be placed and how they would be treated. They still look great, it's been a couple of years. Three beautiful murals went up in the neighborhood and now we have the culmination of Savacchio Park, Burton School and the Roger Young Park also coming together to revitalize that entire neighborhood. So I appreciate the city's report, just to reiterate what Gary Horton said. And I hope that you will vote in favor of the city's plan. We did work extensively together with the residents and everyone in that neighborhood to put it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council file number sixteen three eighty-four, official ordinance fifty-nine twenty-two-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred and nine thousand, three hundred dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. The contribution is from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to be used for stormwater improvements garrison run. Sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Flores. Council file ordinance bill number sixteen three eighty-four and now known as official file ordinance fifty-nine twenty-two-three be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance fifty-nine twenty-two-three by yea six, nay zero. Council file number sixteen three eighty-five, official ordinance sixty twenty-two-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of seventeen thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the hope to be used for parks improvement. Sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three eighty-five and now known as official file ordinance sixty twenty-two-three be finally passed by city council. Ms. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance sixty twenty-two-three by yea six, nay zero. Council file ordinance, council file number sixteen three eighty-six, official ordinance sixty-one twenty-two-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight, eighty from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of twenty twenty-three Green Light Go Funding Program for the West Eighteenth Street Erie Signal Reconstruction Project. Sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three eighty-six and now known as official file ordinance sixty-one twenty-two-three be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance sixty-one twenty-two-three finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number sixteen three eighty-seven, official ordinance sixty-two twenty-two-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and nineteen oh four from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of the twenty twenty-three Green Light Go Funding Program for the Erie Downtown State Street Traffic Upgrades Project. Sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three eighty-seven and now known as official file ordinance sixty-two twenty-two-three be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance sixty-two twenty-two-three finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number sixteen three eighty-eight, official ordinance sixty-three twenty-two-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from a community partnerships program grant administered by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the DCNR, and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three eighty-eight and now known as official file ordinance sixty-three twenty-two-three be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance sixty-three twenty-two-three finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number sixteen three eighty-nine, official ordinance sixty-four twenty-two-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of nine thousand, six dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from a coastal zone management grant administered by the Department of Environmental Protection, the Pennsylvania DEP, and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file ordinance bill number sixteen three eighty-nine and now known as official file ordinance sixty-four twenty-two-three be finally passed by city council.
Lori, I'd like to call for the tote board on this one.
Okay.
If everyone would put their vote by their little switch. Okay. Try it again. Everybody do it again. All right. Let's try that one more time. Wait, wait, sorry, sorry, sorry. Let's try it one more time now. All right, things to note for future usage. Thank you.
City council pass official file ordinance sixty-four twenty-two-three by yea six, nay zero, finally. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen three ninety, an ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is from the Department of Justice, COPS, Bombs... This is from the Department of Justice Cops Bomb Squad Regional Response Vehicle. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance number sixteen three ninety haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three ninety by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Ordinance number sixteen three ninety-one, introduced by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Ms. Flores, an ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, Part Three, Title Three, Business Regulation by adding Article three fifty-four rental housing and establishing the rights and obligations of the owners and occupants of rental housing in the City of Erie. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance number sixteen three ninety-one haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three ninety-one by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen three ninety-two, an ordinance amending the following sections of Article one twelve Rules of Council, and more specifically, one twelve oh one, meetings, one twelve oh two, place of meetings, one twelve oh five, meetings open to the public, one twelve ten, order of business, one twelve eleven, president of council, one twelve twelve, permanent standing committee liaison chairperson, and one one twelve, review of budget. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance number sixteen three ninety-two haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three ninety-two by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen three ninety-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are from the federal grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance sixteen three ninety-three haven't been read is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three ninety-three by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Move the bills.
Move the balance.
Any separations?
Number one.
Need a second.
Oh, I made the motion. You weren't, I thought you were the second on that.
Oh, okay.
I knew Mel wasn't here, I was filling in.
You are the boss, okay.
Number one, any other separations?
Just one and three.
Five, just so we can have a comment on the VNET situation. Just to kind of go over.
One, three, and five. Any other separations? Moving the balance.
You know, let me, let me hit six as well.
Separations one, three, five, and six. Moving the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. Reading number one. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. Erie City Council President Chuck Nelson appoints Robert Howden of four thirty-one Vermont Avenue, Erie to the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, to replace Laura Gunson. Mr. Howden's term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Discussion?
I just wanted to offer some explanation. I had appointed Ms. Gunson, and she's on the zoning hearing board, which makes her ineligible to be on any other boards. There is some people that are on, you know, multiple boards, but particularly with the zoning hearing board, I didn't realize that was exclusive to any other boards. So in her place, we've got Robert Howden of Vermont Avenue. I'd done some work with him a couple of years ago to try to preserve some, some space in his neighborhood that he was concerned about to the, to beneficial outcome for the city. And he's very active on the board for Asbury Woods, as well as some other nonprofit work that's, former Sierra Club member. So he's got a long history of volunteerism in the context of environmental concerns. So I'm excited to see him on that board. That'll be the, that rounds out the board, and now, ten months after we've voted to install it, they're, they're having their meetings and, and getting up and running here quickly. So I'm, I'm excited to see this moving forward now.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes yea six, nay zero. Resolution number three, sponsored by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Keys. A resolution of Erie City Council to accept and support the neighborhood plan for the Fairmont McClellan Planning Area, adopting the recommendation, the multiple-year action plan, and providing for an effective date. Whereas the City of Erie is responsible for the preparation, adoption, and implementation of the city's comprehensive plan, and whereas on July sixth, twenty sixteen, the city adopted a comprehensive plan Erie refocused according to the requirements of the Pennsylvania's Municipal, Municipalities Planning Code, Act of nineteen sixty-eight.
Lori, I, I believe that's enough to identify it for us. Thank you.
Great. Discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the Grassroots Coalition for all the work they put in for organizing this neighborhood. It's very important that the neighborhood be organized so that they can have a way of engaging the government that's, that's helpful. And I'd also like to thank them, and just comment that, you know, this is like a hidden gem in our city, this neighborhood. It's actually our best inner-city neighborhood that we have left in the city, despite the fact that we haven't invested in it in recent years. And so it's absolutely critical now that we invest in this area now, and that we bring it, be able to bring it back and keep it as one of our nicer neighborhoods in the city.
Yeah, I, I would just like to second the support for this, as that neighborhood being so youthful and the next generation of the city, we have to show that we support our next generation and that we're looking for avenues to invest in the needs of our community. As somebody who grew up on the Lower East Side, it's notable when neighborhoods are disinvested, and it's great to see that we're slowly working towards a brighter future for some communities. With this going on, I'm hopeful to see all of our cities slowly be addressing the issues that the communities have been voicing, but not in a unified collective way. So it's hard to ignore things when everybody's speaking on the same note. So I'm happy that the Grassroots Coalition has formed and is giving the community a unified voice to get the things that they need and deserve in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
What she said.
And you made that one mistake about best neighborhood thing, that was incorrect information. Just lost some votes up. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes yea six, nay zero. Okay, I think we have a numbering issue between five and six. Five is Velocity Network.
Yeah.
And six is a Miller Brothers.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand.
Okay. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the approval of the following loan be formally ratified, Velocity Network Inc., VNET, one million dollars for ten years for five thousand dollars. These funds have been made available through the City of Erie Urban Corps Economic Recovery Revolving Loan Fund and Loan Prepayments. The loan will be charged against an account number three six seven zero 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 one zero zero seven. The interest rate is fixed at two point seven five percent per annum. A one-time loan processing fee based on one-half of one percent of the amount financed will be assessed to each client, and the city solicitor's office will assist in the preparation of the loan documents for these transactions. Discussion?
I wanted to discuss, as the Chair of IT Innovation and Communication, I'm very happy to see that the city is investing in Velocity Net. As a result of the pandemic, we have learned that we need a stronger utility as far as internet, other than what we currently have available in our community. So with this, hopefully, we will slowly be at higher speeds. From what I understand, we're laying the foundations so that we can be at ten gig, which is going to put us in the top three municipal areas that have that. And if you are thinking of the future, the internet, the fiber is the industry of the future, so we want to be competing with other areas who are appealing to the next generation of, you know, citizens. So hopefully, this will get us in the right direction so that our city is lit up with fiber and everyone wants to come to Erie in the future because we are connected at ten-speed gig. Thank you.
I'd like to piggyback on that. It was almost exactly a year ago that Jasmine and I hosted a company from Colorado that did the construction on what was, at the time, the fastest fiber network in the nation. They were in town for the Chambers Homecoming Event, looking at Erie as a potential market. So I'm really appreciating the continued investment in VNET to make sure that our local competitors can really satisfy that market and the growth, our local business, and also that they're now at the point of competing at speeds. At the time that the other company was here, there was two cities in the nation, Chattanooga and Longmont, Colorado, that were providing ten-gig residential services. And to give some context as to what that means, is that the definition of broadband, the upload speed, is three thousand times faster at ten gig than the definition of broadband for upload speeds. So when you're hearing about concerns with upload speeds in residential and rural communities, this is now at a spot where we are doing three thousand times better than the communities they're talking about having limited access to broadband. This is not, unless you're planning on uploading forty Disney movies a minute to the internet, this isn't real practical for you. But it is very practical for you if you are industry, if you are commerce, if you are working in financial services, if you are working in telemed, any of these types of next frontier markets, this is really, this really puts a, a runway in front of us for Erie's infrastructure and utilities to be, compete on a global level. So I'm, I'm excited with the continued investment in our local business for this particular utility.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes yea six, nay zero. The next one, sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that American Rescue Act Revenue Replacement Funds be updated in the amount of two million seven hundred thousand dollars to be allocated to the Public Safety Complex Fund for the purchase of the Miller Brothers property located at twenty eleven eleven, twenty-one eleventh State Street, one six five oh three.
I just wanted to separate this to note that we voted to do this back in June at two point eight million dollars. So now we have a resolution updating that to two point seven. I, I actually was asking if we even needed to do this since, since we approved two point eight, do we even need to talk about two point seven? I think it's mostly on the agenda so that the administration can brag about getting an extra hundred thousand in savings. No, no, all right, well, that's, that's what I joked it was before. And so I'm excited to see that as we move forward with this project, that at this first stage, it's coming in below what we had originally budgeted for. So this will be continued, continued improvement. That was after multiple appraisals came in, some for over three million, and after looking at the different appraisals and the scope of project, the administration used this to bring the price down another hundred thousand. So excited to see this continue to move forward and at the first step, be it a cost savings. Any other discussion?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Nelson. This takes us to committee reports.
Any volunteers? All right, Mr. Brzezinski.
Yeah, I, sorry, I ran off, a little digression with this Green Garden thing, but it's festered for a long time, and I think it should be put to bed until the entire process is put together. Once they can show me West Thirty-Eighth Street is actually a bike lane, actually, they can show me how, from Twenty-Sixth Street down to the Bayfront, how they're gonna do that, going down Green Garden, going across tracks, et cetera. Rather than keep on driving the folks in the neighborhood crazy with not knowing what's going on, we have to pay attention to the people. They still pay the bills in case anybody didn't notice. Other than that, there's a whole lot percolating down at the Port Authority. Most of it is quiet for the time being until everything comes together, but exciting things. Our city is growing, and we need to keep on making it grow. That's the bottom line. Next generation needs to be happy to be here. Thank you.
I'll go next. We had a EMTA meeting on September twenty-eighth at four P.M. on Zoom. Things that were discussed were funding issues with our current fixed routes and our lift routes, so hopefully they're able to come to some type of medium where we're able to get the funding that we need because we don't technically fund them, it's other funds that are given to that. If you would like to participate with the EMTA, the next meeting is October, no, yes, October thirtieth at four P.M., which is a Monday, you can email T C R O L L at ride-the-dash-e dot com to get that Zoom link sent to you. The next Blighted Property Meeting is going to be on next Wednesday at nine A.M. I'm not quite sure the date, look, the eleventh, so that'll be happening through Zoom. You can actually email Erin Snippert, which is A S N I P P E R T at redevelopmenterey, yeah, redevelop, R E D E V E L O P E R I E at, no, dot org, if you would like to start participating in those meetings, those are open to the public, and you can go over what's going to be on the Blighted Property List. And if you have concerns about your neighborhood's certain properties, this is a great way and communication point to get that concern heard. We had a great festival on Saturday, September thirtieth, for Fiesta on the Square in honor of Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. It was the first that we've had officially where the city was a sponsor, and we had other great sponsors as well. It was a great turnout, and the community was very vibrant and happy to have the celebration. The food vendors all sold out, which was great. The performers were well-received, and the police officers who were around reported that it was all a great experience, they had no type of issues, and everybody was really welcoming towards them. So that's always a great thing to hear when you're walking around, spending the day in your community. We hope, as a community, that this will be a recurring event for future years, so hopefully the mayor's Latin teen advisory will be starting the process of planning for next year because the community is excited and they're hopeful that this is going to be something that we do every year, just to look forward to as we do up. just to look forward to as we do other celebrations. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Yes, I attended the airport meeting last week. Our airport is going through some challenges. I'm not going to go into them other than that it's great to see that the city, the county, and public and private stakeholders are getting together to ensure that our airport becomes a better airport and is able to service more people and become, that more people hopefully will use our airport. And that's also a very integral part of having a good city, having good air transportation in and out. So I'm hopeful with the developments.
Mr. Troop?
Thanks, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to wish well wishes to Mr. Whitterspoon, who isn't here. Hope he heals quickly and with as least amount of pain as possible. I'm surprised Mr. Brzezinski didn't say congratulations to the Seawolves. So I know he's been doing that all year.
My second-place Tigers, though.
I mean, those of us who play any type of organized sports or any type of activities know how hard it is to win a championship. It's really difficult, so congrats to them. Glad to see investment in the neighborhood out there near Buffalo Road, it's where I grew up. So I'm glad to see that. I'm sure Councilman Keys can attest to that. I'm also, I'm appreciative of the citizens that come to all these meetings and stay involved and stay honest about things. That's, your efforts aren't, it's not a waste of time. So thanks for doing that, and that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, let's see, let's start with housing things. Lot of the last two weeks and the last few months has been seemingly endless meetings around housing issues in Erie, as we heard in the public comments today. I appreciate the folks coming and speaking on the issues facing our unhoused community. It's really nice to have an eighty-degree day in October, but we know that the cold weather is coming, and that's an extremely vulnerable time for our unhoused neighbors. And I say that as they are our neighbors. And so whether they are in a park or an alley or whatnot, I really urge the mayor's administration, us on council, and leaders in the nonprofit sector and all the sectors across Erie to really come together and address the fact that if all of the beds are full, we need to collectively take action before winter is upon us very soon. Additionally, with housing, I want to thank the executive leadership at the Housing Authority, who spent several hours with me last Wednesday, giving me a tour. I feel like I have a much better understanding of what our public housing options are, as well as Section Eight and all of the great work that they are trying to do. Also, thank you to members of council for their supportive votes on the Erie Rental Housing Ordinance that will go for a final vote on the eighteenth at our next meeting. Ordinances require two passages. That will do a lot to really try to prevent homelessness and address our shortage and crisis we have around affordable housing. Other committee assignments with police, there were one thousand one hundred and forty-five calls for service this last week, but no people shot. Also, to beware of fraudulent caller who is posing as an Erie police officer and trying to solicit money. Our officers will never call you to solicit money, so just a reminder of that. I'll be meeting with, having my monthly meeting with the chief and their leadership this afternoon. With the fire department, I want to thank council for approving contract number two, the Tri-State Lockers and Shelving. That is such an overdue investment that is needed for our fire department. All of their gear is, one, very expensive, but it also is light-sensitive. So the fact that it has been exposed and not in lockers is actually a drain on our taxpayer dollars and our city dollars. So I'm so, so happy to see this investment for these truly integral lockers for our fire department's gear. They keep us safe, so thank you for that. And also, again, keeping the family of retired and late firefighter Dave Hershey in our thoughts and prayers. When it comes to, also want to remind folks of the upcoming election on November seventh. This Monday started early voting, that is countywide, not just citywide. You can vote Monday through Friday from eight A.M. to four-thirty P.M. at the Erie County Courthouse, and that's one-forty West Sixth Street. You have until the thirty-first, until Halloween, to early vote. If you are interested in doing that, just get it out of the way. Don't have to worry about making time out of your schedule on Tuesday, the seventh, to do that. Also, as mentioned in public comment, voter registration deadline is ten-twenty-three, so that is coming around the corner here. And then your deadline to request a mail-in ballot is also on Halloween, ten-thirty-one. And that's it.
Thanks. Couple things, just as the, as we've heard a lot about the unhoused neighbors, we do have the winter coming up. And, you know, for my own full-time job, if you ever drive down Peach Street and you notice the church with all the homeless people at it, that's the one that I pastor. We probably had about fifteen people in that alleyway last night. And we try to clean it up in the morning, and when the upper room gets open, that kind of moves things along a little bit. But it is a more pronounced problem that is, in a lot of ways, you know, there's a lot of county services on that as well. But, you know, it is a problem that is pretty particular to the city. With the weather changing, we do have Our Neighbor's Place opening up right around Thanksgiving time. I know my church will be hosting it from November twenty-ninth and the two weeks following that. That is a program that had historically been volunteer-led, and since COVID has had a lot of trouble finding volunteers. So for those that have a particular passion for addressing that issue that has been brought up over and over again during our time for public comment, there is plenty of opportunities, and I've got a fairly small church. So if you really want to volunteer at it, I've got some shifts open in November. We've got two ordinances that I want to highlight from today. We had the one that Suzanne and Jasmine brought forward. I want to commend them on the process by which they produced that. You know, pulling together a study session with some portion of the Housing Committee, working so closely with the Apartment Association and various stakeholders in the community, and working so closely with so many edits from our Solicitor's Office, back and forth, to make sure that this is something. Solicitor's Office was spending time with the state college solicitor and really put in, I think, a lot of effort to come up with something that addressed the concerns of council and our constituents. The second one that passed on first reading was organizing council. I think from this year or the last nine months of acting as president, you know, it was an opportunity to really address stuff that hasn't been updated since, I think, nineteen sixty-eight is where most of that has originated from. I'm looking forward to the reorganization of council next year for whomever the president will be. I believe that we will be a more effective body moving forward with the passage of this, and I believe that the citizens, we're still looking at maybe making some slight tweaks going into the second reading to make sure that citizens have the most access that they can have to council meetings. One of the things that I want to just point out is that historically, council has taken a little bit of time to go on tour. There is some discussion that maybe next summer, we'll be able to spend our evening meetings outside of these chambers and out in the community, maybe, it was suggested, maybe in the various neighborhood community centers. So this ordinance does have some opportunity for that as well. So a few different things that just help us to engage the constituents and make sure that you're as well-represented as it can be. Moving on, we've, in the last two weeks, some of the work that I've been putting in as a community thing, something ended before council, we had Porch Fest last weekend. I'd estimate probably a thousand people were out at various porches throughout the day. Some people popped out, just stood on their porch and listened to a single band. Other people toured around the whole day. I made it to all twenty-one sites. I was exhausted and didn't want to see anyone by Monday. Maybe we can make sure Fiesta in the Square is October this year, is that the?
October fifteenth, we technically go through, so depends on the next planning.
All right.
Hopefully, they don't have it scheduled with Porch Fest next year, because I feel like that kind of pulled people.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a great turnout, so I'm happy with it.
Yeah, yeah. And when we say pulled people, it was like three blocks away for the finale. So I saw a bunch of people double-dipping on that. So it was a pleasure to have so much exciting stuff happening in our city this past weekend. And as Mr. Brzezinski pointed out, Port Authority, I went to two meetings with that this week. I'm excited about the stuff that we have coming up for that. They've got some advertised meetings and then some upcoming public hearings or public input meetings that will be addressing the upcoming opportunities that we see for our city to make sure that public input and public control is, occurs with our most valuable asset of the waterfront. We've got three ordinances that I think will be coming up here shortly. Oh, maybe four, sorry. Yeah, yeah. And it's really everyone that's contributing on this. We have street dedications that are going to be addressed by Councilmen Troop and Keys. They're looking to codify that a little bit and make sure that the appropriate expenses and maintenance are taken care of with these street dedications. We've got pedestrian access as, is being primarily focused on by Ms. Flores, and I think that we're going to produce some good legislation with that. The towing committee is being updated to really reflect the practices that occur on that, and that's being led up by Councilman Faulkner. And then we are still looking at the implementation of a regulations on chickens, goats, and bees. Currently, chickens and goats are prohibited, and bees are unregulated. We're looking at what would be an appropriate way to identify that. We get some pushback, I've received some pushback and some support. One of them is looking at what kind of urban context we have and the idea that these things just shouldn't exist. Los Angeles and New York City have both recently updated their ordinances to allow chickens with strong regulations. I don't think ours addresses rooftop chicken farms, but there's some interesting legislations out there with places much more dense than ours. I think, and just from the input I've gotten from residents, I think once upon a time, our great, the generation I'm at, my great-grandparents came over here, and there was a very organic, mixed community that was put together. And then, you know, there's sociology books out there, the big sort occurred, and things got divided, and people looked for more homogeneous and homogenized communities that reflected their particular values and identities. And at that time, when you look at where we had the ordinances written to prohibit chickens, that's when they were banned. It was right in the midst of that great sort. And I think in today's generations, we're looking to have a more heterogeneous community, a little more of a community that's less sordid and a little more mixed in. And I think that's reflected on people's desires to have contained chicken coops and pens, contained. Free range is still a whole nother level of trickiness. And the input I've been getting are usually, you know, urban millennials moving back into the downtown neighborhoods that want to have a chicken tractor in their backyard that moves around. So I'm excited about the continued dialogue on this. I've already gotten a fair amount of pushback from my colleagues on council about goats and very, very, very large chickens, all of which is, you know, I, I get more noise from the cats in my neighborhood than the chickens, so I have varied concerns. But I hope that we come up with, once again, a good piece of legislation, and the Solicitors have been very busy with all that we've put on their plate. I'm happy to see that they introduced a new staff person in your office today. Makes me feel less bad about burdening you so much. But that's all I have from my committee report. Nothing from the Controller's Office, thanks for coming today. Solicitor?
The only thing is, Ms. Jordan spoke, who had the daycare, somebody asked for her information, oh, Mr. Keys. And otherwise, I have nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Lambs?
Okay, I'll try to go quickly here. I just wanted to quickly point out that there's more than four point one million dollars in grants that we just appropriated or are in the process of appropriating. And I just want everyone to know that, and I want to thank the employees who all were, have been a part of that. It takes a lot of extra work to go after grants, to secure them and administer them. There aren't enough hours in our regular workday to do all that work. And so people should know that we have a lot of very committed employees who want to be able to do a lot of the extra things that we can't do because of the restrictions of our general fund. And in order to do all these extra things, this grant funding is crucial. So I just really want to recognize our employees who really step up day in and day out to make that happen. Also, just want to mention that the Bloomberg Center for Public Innovation was here last Thursday and Friday for a site visit of our Love Your Block program. It was a very moving experience. We visited with the residents who received assistance this summer and some last summer. So over eighty-three residents were helped with small home improvement projects as a result of our Love Your Block initiative these last two years. And we're really looking forward to expanding that in the future, again, going after grants. We're waiting to hear on a couple right now. Also, want to thank you for passing the Buffalo Road Neighborhood Plan. That's a very important next step. All of our neighborhood plans, since the mayor took office, have focused on the east side of Erie. And that's been intentional because a lot of, a lot of focus is needed in those areas, and we're looking forward to working together with them on implementation. It's been a wonderful experience working with the East Side Grassroots Coalition, U E C B C, and the J F K Center. In terms of the unhoused, I want to make sure that people understand that eight-one-four Shelter is the number to call for the coordinated entry program that's run in concert with the county. But there is a diverse coalition of folks, city, county, nonprofit, private, for-profit businesses that are working together on preparing for the upcoming winter and making sure that there are enough beds available for everyone in addition to the permanent supportive housing complex that we're working on. Want to reiterate that the Fiesta on the Square was a great beginning for the Hispanic and Latino community. The Erie Latino Leadership Association and the Mayor's Hispanic-Latine Advisory Council have already started planning for next year. They did an amazing job, and they're an incredible group of people, small but mighty. There were about thirteen people that pulled that off, and they just started meeting in May. So, well, it was a lot of work to get done in a half a year, and, you know, they're, so like I said, they've already started. They were brainstorming at the event about what they wanted to do next year. And then finally, just wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow's press conference, for tomorrow's press conference, we'll have an update on the East Bay Front-Greenway Trail project that we're collaborating with the Erie Redevelopment Authority on. That's all I have.
Thank you. And with that, the, today's meeting is adjourned.
Mr. President, could we vote on adjourning, so I can do that button?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the tote board.
City Council adjourns at ten forty-five A.M.
unanimous. Unanimous.